Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the candidate forum for Elgin City Council in the consolidated election on April 6th. This forum is hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Elgin area. My name is Carol Grom and I will be the moderator tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that works to empower voters and encourage informed participation in our democracy. One of the ways we do that is to hold candidate forums to provide voters an opportunity to hear the candidates running for election. The forums sponsored by the League give candidates for local offices a chance to present information about themselves and their candidacy, background, skills, education, reasons for running for office, and what they hope to accomplish if elected. Excuse me, all candidates in contested races were invited to participate in a forum. Each one was given the opportunity to fill out a candidate questionnaire on our website, and their written responses, if any, can be found in the voter guide. This evening, you will have a chance to hear from eight of the 11 candidates for the four open seats on the Elgin City Council. Cory Dixon, Dustin Good, Richard Johnson, Karen Jones, Jerry McHugh, Anthony Ortiz, Jody Perkins, and Carol Rauschenberger. Marcus Banner, Rafael Garcia, and Steve Thorin did not respond to our invitation. The format for today's forum will be a three-minute opening statement, followed by two-minute responses to questions from the moderator, and ending with two-minute closing statements. Our timekeeper will show the candidates when they have one minute left, 30 seconds left, and when their time is up. Questions for the candidates were selected from those submitted by League members. After the question and answer period, the candidates will have the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement beginning in reverse order. This forum will be recorded and posted to the LWVEA YouTube channel, where it will be available for viewing via links from our website, which is lwelegionarea.org. So, welcome to our candidates, and thank you for agreeing to participate tonight. Mr. Dixon, we will begin with your three-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me here this evening. Thank you to all the viewers, and definitely thank you to all of the contestants who were brave enough, candidates rather, who were brave enough to throw their head in the ring to run for Elgin City Council or just any elected office at all. For those who might not know my name, my name is Cory Dixon. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Elgin, born and raised. I'm a product of school District U46. My background is that I have a bachelor's in business management and a master's in public administration with a concentration of government. I first started off in volunteering to get into this. I started off with the Image Advisory Commission, and then from there, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then from there, I ran for Elgin City Council. So, I'm running for reelection, and I'm asking for your vote. Since being on Elgin City Council, I have been very vocal, I have been very active, I have ingrained, ingratiated myself in the community even more so than I already was. And so, in that, I'm also, I'm also a husband, I'm also a father of three beautiful girls, so I'm a girl dad. I live on the west side of town, you know, outside of my Elgin City Council duties. I work for the Kane County Sheriff's Office, where I serve in a role of Senior Assistant Director of Administration. And in that role, I help detainees find jobs. I do community outreach and conflict resolution and mediation and host of everything else that's ever assigned to me. Since being on Elgin City Council, I've also have become a commissioner with the Liquor Commission, and also I'm now the interim chair of the Human Relations Commission. In addition to that, outside of Elgin City Council, I'm a board member with Greater Elgin Family Care Center. I'm also a board member with the Alignment for Collaborative for Education, and I'm also a board member with the Greater Elgin Family Care Center, and I think I might have already said that, so Food for Greater Elgin is the other board. I get, I get them all mixed up sometimes. And I'm also the founder of the annual Elgin Back to School BBQ Bash. I'm a founding member of the Making Space Art Project, and I actually used to be a caseworker. So, my heart is with the community, I just love helping people and doing everything that I possibly can. And so, that was, that's what I've spent my last four years on Elgin City Council doing. It's been about building bridges, speaking out for the less fortunate, and just making sure that those who need to have a representation on the city council do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Good, your three-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you. Again, like Cory said, thank you for the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on. It's very important to get this information out to voters, so thank you all for watching this. And for me, it started, I was born at Old Sherman Hospital. Actually, my parents met in the 70s at Elgin High. 11 years later, I was born at Old Sherman. I was actually raised right down the street from here in Streamwood, but I'm a K through 12 graduate of U46, and I've been in Elgin for about the past 15 or 16 years. So, since I've arrived here, you know, I was originally working as a mechanic, you know, followed in the family's footsteps. I did make the transition to go back to school though, and began at ECC, and that's where my involvement with the community really picked up. So, while I was there, I was part of the student orientation team, where I got to meet thousands of students who are either graduating from high school or making the big decision to come back to school, which is very rewarding. I eventually was, I guess, through the experiences I had, people encouraged me to run for Student Trustee, and that was my first time making the leap into something like this. So, that was my first time being able to sit in a boardroom, you know, closed session, see the budget, see the priorities of the leaders in that capacity, and that experience equipped me with the skills needed to apply for the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. So, I sat on that committee for five years from 2012 to 2017, and as you know, we were still recovering from the Great Recession at that point. That was when we went through the budget impasse, so I have a lot of background on the things that Elgin did at that time to balance the budget, the hard decisions that were made, and it allowed me to meet a lot of really great people within the city. From that point, I was able to become a downtown, a board member with the Downtown Neighborhood Association. So, originally, when I moved to Elgin, I was living on North Crystal. I did spend a year in Century Oaks. However, the most of my time has been spent downtown Elgin where I live currently. I've also worked in the downtown area, you know, sat on the Subcommittee for the Farm Market. Geez, now it's, I guess we're focusing on how to get community involvement, really, at the Neighborhood Association level, so not only for the Downtown Neighborhood Association, but the other neighborhood associations as well. So, that's also spun into the Community Advisory Board through the Elgin Police Department, which I believe there's some people here who serve on those boards as well. And yeah, most recently, I've been working with a group of students out of U46 that are working on starting a group that is focused on environmental stewardship in the area. So, again, this is just a rundown of the things I've done. We'll get some time to talk about what I want to do in Elgin. But again, thank you to everybody in this room. I know I've had contact with some of you before I made this decision to run, and I owe a lot of that to the individuals in this room. So, again, thank you for this opportunity, and thanks to the rest of the candidates.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you again, also, as everyone has said already, thank you to the League of Women Voters. What you do is incredibly important, and being able to bring all of us together to have informed voters. It's incredibly important, so thank you for that. Thank you to everyone that's here that's watching. Everybody, I hope that we have a huge voter turnout, so hopefully, we can get people out. That's really what we want to do. I think it's important to exercise our right, and then thanks to the candidates for running. So, my Elgin story starts, well, God, in 1978, when it actually is really different, because mom and dad were nowhere near Elgin. Dad came from Duluth, Minnesota. My mom came from Guayaquil, Ecuador. Both came here as teenagers and had four boys. My poor mother had four boys, and I've been, I was born and raised in Elgin, all of us, all my brothers still live in Elgin. My mom lives here with me in Elgin. I've never left, this is where I am. I went to Elgin schools, I went to Channing Elementary and Ellis Middle School, graduated from Elgin High School. After I graduated, started my college career at ECC, and finished off at Roosevelt University. Started teaching, and I taught, I got, I was lucky enough to get a job in Elgin U46, and I've spent my entire career, 19 years teaching. Working with young people is incredibly rewarding. I'd say it keeps me young, but it also makes me feel old at times as well, but it is something that I really love to do, and serving my school community is what I've done my entire career. I've been incredibly active in, in school, and now I really want to make sure that I'm also involved in my own Elgin community, and I have been, but I really wanted to take that next step. And so, like I said, yeah, I went to Elgin High School, that's where I met my wife. We bought our first townhouse in Elgin, and we live in a single-family house in the west side of Elgin with my one daughter and my three dogs. So, that's, that's really, you know, it's always been about Elgin, even in my school community activities. I was lucky enough to be elected president of the Elgin Teachers Association in 2016. I spent two years as the president of the Elgin Teachers Association, that is the largest teachers' unit besides CPS in the state of Illinois, and it was my honor to represent them. That's what I've done my entire life, is, is serving my community and being a public servant, and that's why I want to do this. And so, again, I'm Richard Johnson, and I really hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, your opening statement, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Karen Jones. I'm also a lifetime resident here in Elgin. I'm a small business owner in downtown Elgin. I joined our family business almost 25 years ago in the area. I've been married to my husband Gentry for over 20 years. We've got two great kids, students at U46, one of them was a student at U46. I've been involved in, in many different organizations and groups and projects throughout the city. I'm never very good at listing them off. I've been involved with the Downtown Neighborhood Association. I was a charter org rep for our Boy Scout troop, coordinate and maintain the downtown Elgin planter program. I'm involved in our church board. We've, I've helped and coordinated multiple special events and events and programs. Worked with many of the city's various departments over the last 20 years in different capacities. I, I'm passionate about animal rescue. I'm a foster, I foster dogs, and I enjoy doing work with mobile mutts rescue. We do transport work and foster work with them. I usually, you know, for me, I feel compelled to step in and lend a hand where, where I feel I can be needed and can do some good, so I feel, I felt compelled to run for Elgin City Council with my running mates Jerry McHugh and Jody Perkins, just to try to bring some common sense concepts back to the city of Elgin. I think that I work, I can work collaboratively with all departments and do good to represent all of our city and all of the, the different entities that we have. And thank you so much for coordinating this forum. It's always challenging to, to do these. You guys are one of two, so, so I really appreciate that, and I hope, I hope that we'll have great voter turnout. That was one thing that I initiated in Elgin Civics Club with a friend, that was our goal with that, with that organization, to try to increase voter turnout, because it's pretty, pretty depressing that we don't get more, more people to the polls, quite honestly, but we hope we'll have great turnout. I look forward to hopefully serving the community in whatever way that, that I'm able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. McHugh.
Hi, my name, and thank you to the League and all of you candidates. Again, we all know the struggles of running, and it takes courage and fortitude, so thank you. My Elgin story is a bit different. I came to Elgin in 2006 with my husband John, when we looked at a property in downtown Elgin at 176 East Chicago, was the old Elgin Federal Savings Bank. We were there to maybe open a coffee shop, but we decided that we were going to buy that building because we were aware of the vision that Elgin was beginning for their community, and we wanted to be part of that Renaissance. So, we bought that building, we came up with a plan, we hired a great architect, Eric Peppa. We decided to start two small businesses there. We hired the right people, we invested our own money, and in December of '07, we opened two small businesses in downtown Elgin. For our efforts, we were awarded the Heritage Commission's prestigious William Stickling Award for our re-adaptive use of that property, and we were also awarded the Downtown Neighborhood Association Remarkable Renovation Award. So, that is my beginning in Elgin, and then afterwards, I just wanted to be a part of driving this vision forward, and I continue to want to do that. I have served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I've served on the Elgin Township Senior Services Commission, the first one that they have. I've been a DNA board member, I've served as their treasurer. I have, I'm active in my Neighborhood Association with this Swan, and I served in various roles of Volunteering Nightmare in Chicago, DNA Gala, Fourth of July Parade, because when I was on the DNA board, we were a working board. I am a professional registered nurse with over 24 years' experience, 11 of those in the emergency room, and eight years as a U46 nurse. I have med-surg experience, and I think I have four, I think, I know I have four children. I have four children, five grandchildren, Ozzy, my canine companion. I like to golf, I'm not good at it, but I like to golf, and I'm certainly getting really into pickleball, so I'm anxious for the, the COVID to come under control, so I can get back to that, and I'm asking for your vote, April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz, your opening statement, please.
Thanks, League of Women Voters, for the invitation and the opportunity to come and speak tonight, all the viewers, everybody on Facebook and YouTube, was, they will be posted later. My name's Anthony Ortiz, I'm running for Elgin City Council for the April 6 election. I was born, raised in Elgin, born on the Old Sherman, on the east side of Elgin, graduated from Larkin High School. After high school, I joined the US Marine Corps, did a combat deployment to Afghanistan. After being on discharge from the Marines, I attended Elgin Community College for a couple years, and transferred over to Loyola University of Chicago. Graduated with my, graduated with a bachelor's in criminal justice and criminology. After that, continued my education over in DePaul in downtown Chicago, and got my paralegal from that great institution. Since then, I've been employer of the Kane County State Attorney's Office, beginning as an administrative assistant, within six months, being promoted to a supervisor, and currently leading the HR department within the office. Some of the roles within that, that I do currently is help do with the budgeting, help create the agenda items for the JPS, the Judicial Public Safety Committee within the county, which that helps bring experience to the city council, because I already know how to do agenda items, read them, comprehend them, and understand them. Some of the activities that I'm involved in is the Elgin Police and Fire Commission, where we help interview new candidates to be firefighters and police officers within our city. I'm on the Illinois Veterans Advisory Council at the state level appointment. I was appointed there by the Director of the Illinois Department of Veterans Affairs. She seen me when I was advocating for veterans within our city, to be recognized for their sacrifices and things they've done for our country and our city. During the height of the pandemic of the COVID-19 last year, I rose my hand and started volunteering with the Kane County Health Department as a COVID-19 case investigator. What we did there is every time somebody was, came in contact with another individual that was infected, we did contact tracing to see where it could have spread to, and tried to narrow down the search of people that could have possibly been affected. I'm a member of the Elgin Amnets over at the American Legion. I'm an active member of Swan, I live in the same neighborhood as Ms. McHugh. And the reason I'm running for Elgin City Council is because I want to help move Elgin forward, I want to bring wider city heart transparency, reinforce public safety, bring more programs for our veterans and seniors by partnering, and make intergovernmental agreements with, a handover township, Elgin Township and nonprofit organizations. I've already pinpointed a few organizations that are willing to partner with the city to help bring those programs, which won't raise any taxes or make any extra burden on our taxpayers. Another reason I'm running too is that my entire adult life, I've been a public worker. When I was younger, I served my country, I was in the Marines, now I'm serving my county, and now I'm going to serve our beautiful city of Elgin. I hope to earn your vote on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perkins, you're next.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. I am a fourth-generation Elginite. My great-grandparents arrived from Denmark and Norway in the early 1900s. When they landed in the Elgin area, they fell in love with it, they planted their roots and soon began raising their families here. My maternal grandfather owned a popular downtown business for more than 30 years. My stepfather had a successful business in Elgin for over 50 years, and my husband and I run a business out of our home here in Elgin. I've always been involved in the community and recently became a board member of the Friends of Lord's Park Zoo after volunteering for that organization, and also spend my time volunteering and being a member of the Elgin Historical Society. In addition, I worked on United Way campaigns and volunteered at the United Holiday Wishes Bears Cares event, which is sponsored by United Airlines and the Chicago Bears. It benefits underserved families in the Chicago area. In the past, I volunteered at the Elgin National Little League, where I served as player agent on their board. In the past, my husband and I worked with foster to home and fostered 15 dogs in our home and helped place them in their forever homes. Throughout my full school years, I volunteered in many school events, and I'm also a member of St. John's Lutheran Church here in Elgin. I graduated from St. Edward Catholic High School and attended Elgin Community College, Harper College, and the University of Illinois in Champaign. I married an Air Force veteran, and my son currently serves as Staff Sergeant in the Air Force in his base at McCall Air Force Base. I lived in Elgin my entire life, and I am a 32-year, it's been, actually, I start my 33rd year as United Airlines Flight Attendant. I've traveled around the world and could have moved to any city or any country, but I chose to remain in this progressive city of Elgin. My employer has given me extensive training in cultural awareness, diversity, and inclusion. This training started back in the early 90s and has made significant difference in my career and personal life. Over 20 years ago, I went through the selection process for the coveted position of in-flight leader or purser. The extensive and comprehensive leadership training I was initially given were invaluable and instrumental while working a trip on September 11th in 2001. Continued to hone these skills with yearly training, training, and effectively use them at work and in my personal life. These skills will be crucial when leading such a diverse population. I am running for Elgin City Council along with my running mates Karen Jones and Jerry McHugh, because I recognize that the Elgin City Council truly needs to demonstrate and exercise more common sense leadership when making decisions on behalf of the citizens of this great and diverse city. Elgin requires leadership that is not bogged down by national issues that do not necessarily apply to the city, and the city council should have leaders that are proactive and less reactive. I humbly ask for your vote on April 6th, and thanks for watching.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Rauschenberger.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us this evening, and for making sure that voters across our community have an opportunity to get to know all these great candidates that are here this evening. I'm, you know, we have an array of well-qualified candidates, and that's always great for Elgin. So, I grew up in Elgin, and I come from a family that also settled here a few generations ago. My grandfather opened a furniture factory, and then my father sold furniture here. So, people, many people do know Rauschenberger Furniture. And I followed my family into public service. Both my mother and father served in public offices, as did my brother, and so it was sort of part of our family, you know, how, how we were raised, that you gave back to your community, and you helped everyone that needed help. There was not a, we, we had many people in our home, including sailors from Great Lakes, and we had teachers from abroad, and we had exchange students. So, we were a family that was always open to the needs of the community. I went to University of Illinois, and I got a degree in occupational therapy and moved at that time abroad. I, I took my first job in Athens, Greece, and lived there for a few years, came back and decided to get a master's in business. So, I went on and got a, an MBA in international business. And from there, I lived in various places around the world, as well as around the United States. My first public office actually was in, well, I lived for 10 years in Chelsea, Michigan, and I was elected there to, I was appointed to the Planning Commission and to the city council. However, Chelsea, Michigan is 5,000 people, and that's quite different from 120,000 people in Elgin. But I did learn a lot about how to work with colleagues and, and helping a city move forward. I then, I moved back to Elgin about 14 years ago. My mother was in failing health, and I thought it was time for me to come home. I'm very happy to say that I brought my children here, and they had the same experience that I did at U46, which was a wonderful, diverse, and great school system. So, my family was basically raised here. So, thank you, and again, Carol Rauschenberger.
Okay, thank you all. Now, we're going to go to the question and answer portion of the forum, where each candidate will have two minutes to answer. Tonight, because of the large number of candidates, not everyone will get the same question. That way, we don't have eight answers to each question, which can get repetitious and leave the eighth person with nothing to say. But each one of you will get one question first and answer a total of three questions. So, let's begin. We're going to start with Mr. Dixon. The COVID-19 pandemic has posed unexpected challenges to finances and plans for many municipalities. How has it affected Dixon? And how has it affected Elgin, and what is the path forward to recovery?
Thank you, Carol, thank you for the question, and thank you for clarifying the question. How's it affected Elgin and our recovery? You know, it, across the board, has had a devastating effect on us. We're not exempt from the rest of the country, and definitely not from other like-sized municipalities. We've had some shortfalls. We've had a shortfall in tax revenue. We just went through a budgeting process just, this past December, when we just planned out things for three years, and we're short by the millions. We've received some CARES Fund Act from, we've seen, we've received funds from the CARES Fund Act through the Kane County, through Kane County, and that has helped us, but we're still short. And so, we're hoping that we still have some funds coming from the federal government, from the current administration at some point in time, but we can't rely on that, we know. So, what we've done, we've taken some very proactive steps in cutting some funding, in cutting some projects, and making sure that we're being fiscally responsible. And while all my time and on city council have always have supportive fiscal responsibility, we have a, we have AAA bond rating that saved the city millions of dollars, and I've always supported and, and supported a balanced budget as we legally have to. And the things that we need to do going forward is continue to be very mindful of every single dollar that we spend, and making sure that it only goes towards what we want to become long-term in the future. And in the meantime, all other funds that we have left over, that we can do something with, and it's not a lot of money that, at the end of the day, that we can do something with, we need to make sure that we support our most vulnerable communities. So, we're talking about seniors, we're talking about homelessness, and we're talking about children. And then from there, we also need to support our small businesses too as well. I, you know, during the pandemic, I supported a program through the Downtown Neighborhood Association that gave grant funds to small businesses. And so, we need to do very similar things that make comments that are, that are common sense for our small businesses and for us and for everyone citywide.
Thank you. Mr. Good, the same question. How has the pandemic affected Elgin, and what is the path forward to recovery?
So, so building off what Cory's already said, he dove into some of the financial realities, but we also have the realities of just the human experience throughout this pandemic. I think 2020 was challenging for everyone, from the pandemic, the lockdown, the, the previous election cycle, and I think what's important for us to focus on locally is to rebuild trust within the community, not only between leadership and residents, but between residents. And... And I think there's a few things that we can do really tangibly right now to help foster that. And, you know, one thing that I really want to focus on is how do we implement and empower our committees, our neighborhood associations, and other community groups, whether they're formal or informal, and equip them with some of the tools that we've seen emerge throughout the pandemic. You know, one of my concerns is that communications start to break down, whether it's in-person meetings can't happen, or then Zoom meetings pop up and some people don't know how to use them or don't have access to it. So I think there's things that we can do as a city to ensure that everybody has connections or there's at least a contingency plan in place. Speaking to the economic devastation that took place, I do think that second-tier cities like Elgin stand to not take it so hard as some of the rural communities in the country. We're outside of Chicago and we're going to attract a lot of those individuals who decide to relocate because they no longer have to work in Chicago. So I think part of it is, again, working on Elgin's image. What are we, what do we want to be? You know, so really iron that out and then put ourselves in front of building developers, in front of individuals who want to live here and start a business. So I guess for me as an individual candidate, I really want to focus on getting into the weeds a little bit more than I already am in terms of building relationships, not only just between residents, but also in the business community. And then, of course, being a facilitator on city council to make sure that all those communications are happening consistently and congruently, and they just got a straight shooter on city council to deal with.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, we're going to let you answer this one also, and then we'll move on to other questions. How has the pandemic affected Elgin and what's the path forward to recovery?
Yeah, so the thing is, is that, you know, as we know, we're in unprecedented times, and the thing is, is that unfortunately, there is no segment of the city that has not been touched by the pandemic. The city itself, for me, I think about the arts, right? We're talking about, you know, whether we're talking about the heavens and its ability to be used, all the different people, all the different groups that use it. We're talking about, you know, some of our artists, our artist loss that we have and the people that are, you know, need that chance to perform or to produce their artwork. So the arts have been, have been hurt by this. Our social services. Again, you know, unfortunately, when we're, when we have to tighten our belts, one of the first things that gets cut is social services and education. And speaking of that, our education has been affected as well. There's no doubt. I see these kids every single day. I know what they're, what they're going through and the education that's been affected. So all these things touch every one of our residents. We have families in their emotional states, right? We have, we, I don't think we've had a chance really to grieve and understand the loss that we've, that we've all suffered as a city, as a state, as a nation, as the world. And so when I see that in moving forward, you know, we have so many people who've lost, not just the family members, but they've lost their businesses, they've lost their ability to make money, they've lost their jobs. It is about trying to rebuild that. So it is actually, you know, as Mr. Dixon talked about, the money that we should be getting from the federal government, from the state, and hopefully that is moving forward. That's one of the things we really have to work on. We have to work as a community as well. I would really love to see some sort of community gathering once we're able to do that again. Some sort of community gathering, some sort of expression of our grief. Because I think, like I said, we've not gone through that yet. We really haven't processed that, whether it is some sort of. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're going to go on to other topics now. Ms. Jones, what are some of the other important issues facing Elgin today? And how well do you think the city is addressing them?
There's many issues facing the city today. Let's see, I guess we'll. One of the things that we've been talking a lot about during this campaign is the homeless, street people, mental health, some of those things that that we see every day. I think that the city does a decent job. I participated in their camps program with some of that. During the campaign, we've met some really dynamic community members in the community that have some great ideas. I think the city needs to work collaboratively with some of these groups. They need to take a little bit of a leadership role on some level to help address that and work together with everyone to, to bring that forward. Like I said, we've.
Are there any issues that you think need more emphasis, more higher priority?
A higher priority. I think that we, we as a community really need to focus on the narrative as, and as leaders in the community, we need to focus on the narrative that we're sharing with our citizens and our residents. We get back to the COVID and how to address that. We have, you know, Shiri Ossenbrenner, the senior liaison with the city, did a fantastic job. I think we need to address the communications, customer service level at City Hall and how we're interacting with their residents and what's the best way that we can do that. And really get down into the nitty-gritty, how to host some interactive prioritizing for the community of how we can, how we can, how the city can better serve them on a customer service level.
Thank you. Ms. McHugh, same question. What are some of the other important issues facing Elgin today and how well is the city addressing them?
Well, I think other issues that, I don't want to say other issues, but I think the issues that present themselves to our residents every day are the things that are most important to them and what the city council should be focusing on. They are worried about their public safety, their roads, that they are in good repair, that they live in a neighborhood that where they can have a good quality of life. And so therefore, we need to have an emphasis on codes being enacted. And we, we need to also always be mindful that those basic issues are what are important to our residents. As far as other issues, of course, homelessness is or the street people are one of our major issues that are going to take a committed effort from people throughout the community to help find a solution. And but I think that I find when I talk to people, they're not really concerned about large issues when they talk about their city government. They're concerned about the issues that face them day to day. As I said before, I literally, public safety, good water, healthcare. Their roads, they don't want potholes. So I think to me, those are the issues that are important that I would represent people of this community to make sure that those needs are met. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz, the same question. What are some of the other important issues facing Elgin today and how well is the city addressing them?
I think one of the biggest problems we're having now is our downtown area. Right now, the City Hall doesn't have a strategic plan to keep businesses in, to keep them here and to bring more in. Like, if you look at bricks, they just left us to go to St. Charles. Over the summer, Dog Paul left us to go to Street Mortar Shabbur. So what we need is a strategic plan. We need to tap into the Rivers Edge Tax Centers from the state to bring that money back to our city, back to our downtown. Aurora, the Tri-Cities already tapped into these funds, and they have thriving downtowns. And we always say, we want to be like somebody else, but we can always take ideas from them and pick their brain of how they able to bring more top, more businesses downtown, how they were able to bring more people downtown. Like your last question about how to rebuild after COVID. By rebuilding our downtown, that will bring more business, that'll be more traffic, more revenue, more taxes. And that's a good way to try to dig us out of the hole. One of the other candidates said that we had to do a few tax cuts and a few budget cuts, or not tax, budget cuts and line item adjustments for those budgets, stay in the black. That's true, and we might have to do it next year. But if we have a forward-thinking city council that could tap into these extra funds, tap into the, allocate the TIF districts, allocate the money within a TIF districts accordingly to what they need to be sent to, then we could restart rebuilding our downtown, showing that we are committed to our city, committed to our business owners, and committed to our residents to have entertainment, have food, have whatever they need. They're bringing, we're bringing more condos downtown, but with the condos come more people, and those people are going to want something to do. And when they want something to do, they're going to spend money. When they spend money, it brings more revenue to our city. So that's one of the biggest things we need is, is cut out the kick the can down the road approach, create a strategic plan, partner with our senators, representatives, the city councils, the whole city management, and the mayor and the manager to get this problem solved, get a good plan, and build downtown Elgin. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will go first to Ms. Perkins. Elgin residents want high-quality services, infrastructure maintenance, and economic development. But they also want to keep taxes low and the budget balanced. As a council member, how will you prioritize spending in a lean budget?
That is a very good question. I like that. The pandemic has changed our lives and how businesses do business, including municipalities, governments, anything like that. Everything changed last year and is still changing as we speak. Like Jerry said, you know, as a resident of Elgin, I want to know that my city services are top-notch. And I want them to be top-notch. I want, I want the best where I live. And I think that we can do better in regards to our, our public services. With the challenges that we will be facing during, you know, we're in a recession right now, and we don't know how long that's going to last. But we need to use our general, our reserve funds in an appropriate way. I don't believe that we need to be hiring new positions which have legacy costs. I don't think that's fiscally responsible. I think we, we need to really look at our staffing and our pay for the things that the people need. We need to open up the Parks and Recs Department. We need to find a way to do that. I don't believe we need to raise taxes, but we need to find some way to give revenue into the town, and that would be through economic development.
Thank you. Ms. Rauschenberger, the same question, and I will repeat it. Elgin residents want high-quality services, infrastructure maintenance, and economic development. But they also want to keep taxes low and the budget balanced. As a council member, how will you prioritize spending in a lean budget?
So the city of Elgin, since I've been on the city council, has managed to keep property taxes at a certain level, and we have not raised them. However, on the other hand, we have raised other, what we call is diversification of taxes. So we have taxed other things like telephone and hotel motel taxes, et cetera. So we have been getting more revenue in to meet shortfalls. I think that we can do a few things that I've always talked about. One is, if we have good planning, Anthony mentioned this, and I've mentioned it before, we need to be planning for the future for economic development, for the best way to maintain a sustainable city, because in the long run, that will help us save money. We need to think about what is the best needs for our infrastructure. So this is, planning has to take place first, and planning means people. So I, I've always suggested that, for example, we have one more person like a economic development or another planner on the city manager staff. Because if you're too thin at that staff level, their plan, planning doesn't happen. There's not enough time. You're reactionary. You're not proactive. So that's one thing. Another thing that I've suggested in the last few years is we are all time, we are at all-time lows for borrowing money, interest rates. We should be thinking we have a very low, sorry, per person debt ratio. We need to borrow a little money to do roads, because this has been a bad winter and those roads need to get done. And finally, I think that economic development is where we need to look for more income. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, same question. Elgin residents want high-quality services, infrastructure maintenance, and economic development. But they also want to keep taxes low and the budget balanced. As a council member, how will you prioritize spending in a lean budget?
Yeah, first I want to bring up something that was actually just brought up to by a couple of the candidates here. And it's something I actually just said yesterday in a different questionnaire. But one thing we need to have is a unified marketing plan. What we sometimes struggle with is who we are. Who is Elgin? What is it that we're trying, what goals are we trying to achieve? What do we want people to know about us? And what do we want people to celebrate us? We sometimes struggle with that. And as someone who served on the Elgin Image Commission, I know this firsthand. This is a conversation that we've been having in Elgin forever. We're not the same city that we were in the nineties or the eighties, rather. But now we have evolved and we've gotten much, much better. So there are three key things that I would like to look at. Number one is the unified marketing plan, as I said. Number two, we need marijuana dispensaries. It's legal here. We need to, we, you know, with that stigma that's, that was attached to it, you know, the public is solely, but surely getting, getting over that. It's a major tax revenue. You know, why we don't have a marijuana dispensary in our city right now, it boggles me. It boggles my mind. I was a part of passing the ordinance, but we just have not landed, you know, one of those big fishes, I'm going to say. So that's something that we actually need to execute, and we need to open it up so that we can have more of them in the city. And number three, one thing that we also can do in the future is, you know, build out our sports complex so that we can have people who don't live in our city come to our city, stay at our hotels, and, you know, buy things here so we can have increased sale taxes. We have to stop thinking about just maintaining what we have. We actually already have excellent core services. Our Public Works Department is, I'll put them up against anybody. They're absolutely the best. You know, we have the best water, we have the best garbage pickup, and we contract that out, but we still have a really good company in waste management doing it. We have one of the best police departments that you're ever going to find anywhere. And, and so we have everything here. We have all of the ingredients. Now it's about thinking outside of the box and doing the things that we imagine for ourselves and become the great city that we all know that we are.
Thank you. This next question will go first to Mr. Good. In order to attract and retain residents, Elgin needs a diversified housing stock that includes affordable homes for young people just starting out to downsizing seniors, especially in the low to moderate income range. Should Elgin prioritize more affordable housing as part of a healthy mix of housing options? If so, how?
So I think that we all know the tax base has to be regrown as quickly as possible. And the pandemic has shown us that residential property tax is probably the best stabilizer. You know, as we saw with the pandemic coming through, it cut down on sales tax and cut down on businesses being able to operate in general. So I am in favor of building more residency. If you look at some of the research that the Chamber has done, they expect the city to grow significantly over the next decade. So we're going to need to have more affordable housing. So as somebody who's going through this real time, you know, I rent downtown. You know, I sit on the Downtown Neighborhood Association Board, so I see what's happening. I see that, like the forty-two-page court project. That's a development that was, I guess, next in line after the tower building. And some people have alluded to here, there's TIF money that's available, and we need to use that to spur the economic development. And that's an example of that happening. If you look at the market rates for those units, they do line up pretty close to what the market value is. I think they're starting at nine fifty up to about twelve fifty. And so it's going to be, it's tough, you know, we want homeowners to do well, and right now the market is in their favor. The inventory is pretty thin. But personally, a goal of mine is to be a homeowner and to restore an older home here in Elgin. So I think I'm a fan of building on what we already have. I'm a big proponent of the Strong Towns approach. I don't think it's wise for us to can, to focus on continually expanding outward, because as you do that, the cost to deliver those services grows more dramatically than where the infrastructure is already composed. So again, I'm downtown, I have a little bit of a, I guess, a biased focus on the downtown, but I definitely want to see this concentrated in areas that are already equipped with the infrastructure so that we're not putting more strain on delivering water, fire protection services, police services. And I think we have opportunities here in the downtown specifically, but also in the collar areas to redevelop. And we just need to be flexible, like we need to be aggressively flexible as we come back from the pandemic if we. And we just need to be flexible. Like we need to be aggressively flexible as we come back from the pandemic if we hope to spar with some of the other communities of similar size.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll ask you the same question. In order to attract and retain residents, Elgin needs a diversified housing stock that includes affordable houses for young people just starting out to downsizing seniors, especially in the low to moderate income range. Should Elgin prioritize more affordable housing as part of a healthy mix of housing options? And if so, how?
So the, the simple answer to your question is absolutely, yes, we should be prioritizing affordable housing. What you can see first and foremost, if you look at the rest of the Fox Valley, if you look at St. Charles, if you look at Geneva, they, affordable housing doesn't exist. In fact, places like Geneva fight affordable housing from going into their city. That's not the city Elgin is and it never will be as far as I read. That's what I hope. And what I would say is that we do need to have affordable housing. That's when we can draw people to our city. You know, obviously it is not just a residential tax base, which is incredibly important, absolutely. But it also then continues to bring more and more people to add to the, the diversity of ideas, entrepreneurship, the arts and so forth. There's so much more that comes with that. So I think it really starts with the downtown area and I hate to be harping on the downtown is where we start, but it, it is really where we start, right? Where we continue to add the affordable housing in that area. It then allows then some of that infrastructure as far as economic development is concerned to really thrive. We need to have more business there, not just small businesses, but all sorts of businesses. So once those businesses begin to grow there, people need places to work, people need places to spend their time, their money, their leisure. It really starts there. And so when we talk about young families, I think that we do a really great job here in Elgin in attracting young families. We have great school systems. We have great, our parks and rec is great. We have lots of areas for people that to, to, to go spend that time. But I think on the same side of that too, the other thing is that we have a area for our retirees. So you said affordable housing, not just for young people that are just starting out, but those then who are on the other end who are retiring. We have it on the west side. We don't have it so much on the east side. We don't have it near the downtown area where again, where we could have them spending their time. That I think is really what we need to focus in on.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, I'm going to ask you the same question. Elgin needs a diversified housing stock that includes affordable homes for young people just starting out to downsizing seniors, especially in the low to moderate income. Should Elgin prioritize more affordable housing as part of a healthy mix of housing options? And if so, how?
Yeah, and I think it also needs to be reviewed and reevaluated about how that mix of housing is. Cause we, we do have a pretty diverse and extensive housing mix. You can become a homeowner in Elgin for under a hundred thousand in many areas of our community. And again, we need to get back to that narrative, the image that we have out and about and it is continued, that continues to be that, and it's a false narrative. To Mr. Johnson's point, we have excellent schools. You just have to pay attention and get engaged. We have, we have an excellent infrastructure. We have our public works, all of our core services. We are, are above and beyond most communities in this area, the social services that we offer to our residents, to our community. And we need to focus on that economic development. We need to diversify how that's coming. We, you can't build the community on our social services without the economic development to, to further progress that. But our housing mix is pretty good. The rentals, the cost of living in the areas, there's many different areas. I think I would like to see a full evaluation of what exactly we feel we're missing. We just have added a senior high rise near the downtown Elgin. We have the senior apartments in the downtown Elgin. There's several locations around thirty-one. Like I said, there's small housing rentals, apartments. I'm on the east side. So I see in, in those various neighborhoods, there seems to be a pretty dynamic mix, but we need to start sharing the narrative of what, why, the what and the why you should be living in Elgin.
Thank you. Ms. McQ, this one will go first to you. What type of new development is Elgin looking for? And what factors do you think should guide the solicitation and approval of new development?
Well, it's interesting that Mr. Dixon brought up the sports complex because that is something that I have shared previously on other questionnaires and areas and with community members. So that is one of the things that I am proposing that we absolutely start looking at developing. That would provide first, a fantastic image for Elgin. Second, it would go along with the, the heads and beds of the visitors and content convention bureau. Those people would come possibly from all over the region or even the country to participate here in Elgin with sports events. So that's one thing that I have been touting throughout the campaign. The other thing is, is as we talk about our downtown, you need the right people in leadership to actually make this happen. You do need a planner. You need to plan. You need to work with the property owners to develop as we did in a building. You, you decide what's going to go there, what the residents need. And then you, you help them get a kickstart or whatever it takes. But we cannot keep downtown just being a whimsical kind of place where people maybe happen to come. We have to start going out and recruiting them to come to our downtown. And we need to have the light, right kind of leadership that understands what small businesses and businesses in general need to thrive in Elgin. But image is key and sports complex is key also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Same question. What type of new development is Elgin looking for? And what factors do you think should guide the solicitation and approval of new development?
This McQ took some of my answer. I have another, I have some more. Yeah, one of them, somebody had touched on already is about the marijuana dispensary. That's a development that we should have, that we should have been had. We've had the law passed a couple, a couple of years now. I think it was twenty, twenty twenty or twenty nineteen when law passed that you could have the dispensaries. City council already approved to remove a few of downtown adult parks from the list. So the dispensary can go in downtown. And that's a luxury tax. That's not a tax that people need to live off of, like property tax, gas tax, food tax. People need those things to survive and live. Marijuana is a luxury. So I have no problem reasoning with taxing that to bring an extra revenue back into our city. And then, and then that'll go back to the COVID nineteen. That would help rebuild the, rebuild and bring more money back in after the pandemic. Another thing Ms. McQ touched on is the sports complex. There's already a strategic plan. The city council has been sitting on, or city hall has been sitting on for who knows how long. They already have a plan of how to restructure the sports complex. It's already a plan of which little league teams, which soccer teams, which softball teams, what tournaments they're going to have there. How do we do the BMX track? And the six hundred State Street property was part of that development project. There, there is multiple strategic plans and plans in place. That's in city halls archive somewhere collecting dust. But nobody's put, pulled it off the shelf, dusted it off and put it back on the table to talk about. Those are things that we need to, to bring the city forward and to bring more, more economic growth and development. That, that like our, the visitors bureau and the, and convention center. They, they would love that thing because if we have a little league, league word series here, that's bringing teams from all across the country and sometimes across the world. They come and play tournaments here. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perkins, we'll ask you the same question. What type of new development is Elgin looking for? And what factors do you think should guide the solicitation and approval of new development?
The city of Elgin, um, years ago had, actually had an economic development director and it was unsuccessful. Um, I don't believe that we need another one. We pay the DNA and the chamber to, to drive our economic growth. And I think that they need to be tasked with getting a strategic plan together, presenting it to the city. And then the council in the city can work together to implement that plan. I believe that we need to have the planning department also get involved in this as well. As far as the type of economic growth, I believe that the downtown is vital. What type of businesses should go down there? I think that will be dictated by all the new residents that are down there. Obviously, we would love to have restaurants and things like that. I would like, if elected, I would like to try and implement a bi-local plan. I watched a successful program happen in Wichita, Kansas. The downtown was dead. You could shoot a cannon and hit anybody down in downtown. And in the last five years, local small businesses, mom and pop shops have opened up and it is booming. And I do believe that Elgin could do the same successful type of program, you know, promoting by local. I know that with COVID nineteen, a lot of us have said, let's support our local businesses. And I think that should continue.
Thank you. This next one will go first to Mrs. Rouschenberger. What are your thoughts on proposed changes to the ethics ordinance with regard to campaign contributions, lobbying and double dipping?
Uh, uh, thank you for that question. I'm going to jump back one second and say, as far as development, I think we need to have a, a, a density development in downtown Elgin for more housing and multi-use. And I've also, I've been active in getting new developers to come look at Elgin and we should be doing more of that. And I think we need to look at IT, health and clean, clean energy jobs. Those are the kind of companies we should be going after, not warehouses. So back to the ethics, I think this is the moment to be talking about ethics in our community. The, the, it was very unclear in the initial ethics wording that was brought to Elgin about campaign contributions. It was sort of like if someone has, you can't take contribution from anyone that's might be doing business in, with the city in the past or eighteen months in the future. So if someone contributes to my campaign, they can't do business with the city for the next eighteen months. So it was very unclear. I think double dipping is one of the, the, I, I'm not sure what the clarification was there. What double dipping means, whether you're getting, already getting retirements. And I think the lobbying question is still open. It's hard, it was hard for me to feel as though if that is your profession, that now you can't run for public office. And I think we're waiting on the state to make a determination because it is in, it's being litigated on the in Chicago and discussed on the state level. So I would like to hear what that, what the state says on that first. But we are continuing to discuss and we had a lot of contributions to how we should update that ethics ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Same question. What are your thoughts on proposed changes to the ethics ordinance with regard to campaign contributions, lobbying and double dipping?
Well, the ethics ordinance as a whole in general, I simply just don't have a problem with it. And I liken that to when it comes to things in social justice and we talk about police reform. Good officers say, you know, I don't have a problem with the reforms because I'm a good officer. I don't have a problem with the ethics ordinance because I'm a good public servant. I got into this to serve. I grew up poor, section eight housing, never around any politics. Family barely even voted, talked about voting. I did this because I love it. So the ethics ordinance as is, you know, really isn't a problem with me holistically. Are there some things that we probably need to tweak and change? Yes. And we've had those conversations and the ethics ordinance actually is going to come back in the next couple of weeks. So that's going to be passed. It was in unanimous, unanimously so. And when we talk about, you know, certain parts of it, it's hard for me to even think about, you know, when you're talking about the, you know, campaign contributions. Okay, they, listen, yeah, you shouldn't, you know, take money from, from, from people who are doing business with the city. I mean, to me, that's, that's common sense. It's not, that's not tough. That's not hard. That just makes sense. You want to do a job for the public, you need to be transparent. And you need to tell people if you take, who you're taking money from. So I simply just don't have a, a problem with it. And just to bounce back, when we were talking about new development in the city, we talked about housing. Housing is super important and actually affordable housing is economic development. Because you do, people do have to come out and build those homes. So you're hiring people to come out there. I actually don't have a problem with expansion either. And because that also is tax revenues too, when you have new homes. I live out in an expanded area, so to speak, on the west side of Elgin, on, you know, the west side of Randall Road. I'm one of two council members that live on the west side currently. And, and I think that's all a part of, of what we do here. City councils make those types of decisions. And so, yeah, this must dance.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Last one for this question. What are your thoughts on proposed changes to the ethics ordinance with regard to campaign contributions, lobbying and double dipping?
Personally, I, I'm glad the conversation is happening. Going back to a previous answer I had, I, I'm really focused on rebuilding trust. You know, the lack of trust is expensive. When people don't trust their representatives, they question representatives, they question plans and everything bogs down. So, you know, being somebody who's spent their entire life growing up in Illinois, I've only ever been subjected to a government that doesn't seem to perform near the top at all. And there seems to be never ending stories of corruption. So I'm glad the conversation is happening. And the most recent example of what happened with ComEd. The further I dug into that story and realizing that residents were paying thirty percent more on their ComEd bill because of the way that things happened behind the scenes. It's enraging. It's enraging to everybody I came across that talked about the topic. So again, I'm glad that the conversation is happening. This is the time to have it. As somebody who's seeking a, a role on city council, all of this being clarified is appreciated. And on my behalf as a candidate, that's why I'm running as a hundred percent resident funded candidate. It just makes things clear. Again, it builds a, a level of trust within the community to know that that's where the funds are coming from to help you run a campaign. I know we all have to do it as part of the deal. But I think running a campaign that's resident funded helps relieve some of the anxiety that residents might have when they're casting their ballot. So. Yeah, the specifics of it, double dipping, obviously is an issue that has to be faced in Illinois. The kick the can approach has happened for so long with the pension issue. And each time that you see these, as it's being highlighted right now in the pandemic era, there's going to be budget constraints, which means we have to revisit the realities that we play, put in place decades ago. So again, hats off to everyone who's running right now because everybody in this chat knows we're going to be facing hard decisions. But that's one that I think we can really remedy and, and get behind as a group.
Thank you. Next question will go first to Mr. Johnson. Describe what you think are the most important qualifications for a city council member and how you meet those qualifications?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so most important, so one of the things that I've learned in my time as, as a teacher. I mean, I think it's important to be a student and to do your homework, right? And I mean that in the way that I've been a student, I, I don't know, I think I've counted that I've sat ten, ten thousand hours in a class. And when you do that, and I'm talking about me as a, as a student myself. I have a master's degree and I have a Juris Doctorate as well because I believe in education. But in doing that, I also learned that you have to be able to listen. And I think that this is one of the things that's most important for a council person. Because I think there are too many times and, you know, as we sit here on just kind of hammer and yammer on, it's way more important to open your ears and your heart than it is open your mouth. And I think that we have to learn from our residents. We have to listen to our residents. We have to actually represent their interests, not ours, right? It's not about us. It's about the people that we represent. I think we have to have integrity. So you just talked about the ethics, the ethics ordinance. Absolutely timely, especially when, you know, it, it, it reminds me as, as Mr. Good was talking about growing up in Illinois when, you know, we, we have this, this horrible record of having governors who go to prison. So ethics, I think are way beyond, you know, they should have been repaired a long time ago. So I think someone who is, who has integrity, someone who, again, who, who is able to listen, someone who is able to understand that they can make mistakes and learn.
someone who is able to understand that they can make mistakes and learn from them. And that's the thing, is that it's not about them trying to cover for ourselves, but instead saying, hey, yeah, I understand I made a mistake, and it's time to, to make those reparations for it. And I think that those things are incredibly important for a city council person. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, same question. Describe what you think are the most important qualifications for a city council member and how you meet those qualifications.
Right. So I think the most important qualifications are being able to educate yourself and inform yourself and learn about the issues that you're handling. I think it's so important that the, that our elected officials have integrity, have balance, have respect. We've, we've lost that in, in a lot of different political aspects that, that people, this gotcha government, this, you know, attacking other people and name-calling and inciting and enraging people is not a leadership skill to me. That, that's, it's in poor taste, and it speaks to the people who are, who are demonstrating those characteristics. I believe that there's always three sides to every story. The only way you're going to get to, you know, there's his, hers, and the truth. The only way you're ever going to figure all that out is by meeting with all the parties involved and hearing those conversations and taking that into consideration and sorting it out. I think that we, we need to recognize that Elgin is so incredibly diverse. That's why we choose to be here, right? That's why we're living here. And the council needs to be making decisions that are in the best interest of everybody in this community. You can't have special interest groups. You can't be spreading incorrect information and false narratives. We need to all stand in our integrity and lead with that, that ability of kindness, embracing, and, and real real leadership abilities. And that just means working together, using common sense, collaborating, and getting out in the community and hearing what, what folks have to say.
Thank you. Last one for this question will be Ms. McQ. Describe what you think are the most important qualifications for a city council member and how you meet those qualifications.
Well, it's interesting to run for city council, you just have to be a resident and not have an overdue water bill. So I do meet those qualifications. But I do believe that somebody who wants to be on our city council should have leadership qualities that allow them to be a critical thinker and humble and not arrogant. Sitting on that dais does not make you any different than any other person that lives in this community. And we are here, if you are taking that seat, you are here to serve and listen and care. And so therefore, I do believe I have those qualities. And I do that every day with people in the community. I care. I am, I volunteered for two COVID-19 vaccine clinics, and I'm going to do my third one tomorrow. I, as a nurse, I'm constantly reaching out to my neighbors and other people in the community to check on them and see how they're doing, especially during COVID, with all the stress that's on people. So I would say the most important qualification to me, for me to be on that council, is that I am fair, I stand in my integrity, I will be humble, and I will represent all of the people of Elgin, all across the Elgin. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final question will go first to Mr. Ortiz. The recent discussions between the city and the firefighters' union over a refusal to defer a scheduled raise to help resolve a shortfall in the budget caused some concerns. Non-union staff have faced wage reductions, deferral of raises, and even some layoffs. What are your thoughts on the best way to deal with budget issues and possible cutbacks in a manner that is fair to all employees?
So, yeah, I was following this one pretty closely. One of the, the biggest things is that the firefighters, the fire union were under contract. And if I was on city council, they were already, were binded by a contract that they, that we have to give them this money. All we could do was ask the fire president and the vice president to defer their raises to the next year, how a city council did. But the fire union didn't want to do it, and then they have all right too, because the city is under contract with that department. I'm running on reinforced public safety, because I think our public safety, whether it's police or fire, should be the last agencies touched. Because during the pandemic, they were the ones in the frontline. Over 40 of our firefighters got COVID-19. And after they got, after they got healthy, where were they at? They were back on the front lines, picking up the residents of Elgin and making sure they were okay. Same thing with our police officers. They were there with our firefighters. They were catching COVID-19 left and right also. So trying to pin the city against our, our public safety, I don't think it's a fair thing to do. But I do believe that everybody's got to give a little bit. The city management gave up some of their salary, non-union employees gave up some of their salary. People keep saying that the police department gave up their salary, but the police department is still under contract negotiations. They don't, they don't even have a contract. But I bet you if they had a contract, they'd probably phone line with the rest of the unions within the city. So I think that the way we got to move forward is to make sure that when we do our contracting and negotiating and collective bargaining, that there should be, there might need, might need to negotiate something in there with the unions, saying that in case we come in hard times, is this a possibility? Is this an option? This is the third option to the second one. And the way you do that is with good negotiating, good friendships with, with, with organized labor departments, and, and not bullying each other. We don't bully each other, and we all give up a little bit. It's the best for the city.
Thank you. Ms. Perkins, I will read the question again. The recent discussions between the city and the firefighters' union over a refusal to defer a scheduled raise to help resolve a shortfall in the budget caused some concerns. Non-union staff have faced wage reductions, deferral of raises, and even some layoffs. What are your thoughts on the best way to deal with budget issues and possible cutbacks in a manner that is fair to all employees?
As a employee of United Airlines, I have dealt with bankruptcy, I have dealt with pay cuts, and I can tell you firsthand, none of it is fair. As you know, the airline is struggling right now, and we are dealing with laying off, just in my department alone, over 15,000 flight attendants, if this PERS Act that's in the Senate right now doesn't pass. So I'm, I'm well-versed in contracts and union work and how it, how it goes. As far as the firefighters go, they, they do have a contract, and the city had to honor that. But I think it was an opportunity for the city to create some trust with a department that doesn't trust the city of Elgin. I think that if they had gone to the union and said, you know, hey, can you do this? We'll give you this, and maybe that this was, we won't cut staffing. I think that the fire department probably would have said, yeah, we'll play. We'll take, we'll, we'll defer our raise, just guarantee that we're not going to cut any staffing. I think that would have been a gesture on the city's part that would have started to build some trust. In regards to cutting that service at, you know, engine six, I didn't agree with it. This isn't the time to, to add new positions. We could have postponed it, we could have postponed hiring any new employees when we have all these budget, you know, these pay cuts, people being laid off and those things. This is not the time for that. And I think by saving those salaries, it could be applied to other employees that are obviously dedicated, because they're all still with us and working very hard for less money.
Thank you. Ms. Rauschenberger, yours will be the final answer, and it's a long question, so I'll read it again. The recent discussions between the city and the firefighters' union over a refusal to defer a scheduled raise to help resolve a shortfall in the budget caused some concerns. Non-union staff have faced wage reductions, deferral of raises, and even some layoffs. What are your thoughts on the best way to deal with budget issues and possible cutbacks in a manner that is fair to all employees?
Thank you for the question. First of all, I did, I do want to thank the, the city staff and, and some of the unions that did not take a, a raise this year or had cuts in their salaries. But that doesn't mean that negotiations between the city and the union couldn't have been more fruitful. I do think that both sides were sort of stuck on what they wanted. I myself spoke with the negotiators from the city side, and I also spoke with the negotiators from the fire side. And there didn't seem to be room in the middle at this point. And it, it's a difficult time. It's a difficult time for everyone. And so I did support the fact that they had a contract and they got their two and a half percent. So they were under contract. The, what we decided to, or, you know, the, the process where they were using an ambulance more out of Station Six, didn't, you know, cut anybody, we didn't cut any staff. The, you know, it, it's only just a matter of using an ambulance more than a fire engine. And so that, that was going to happen sooner or later anyway. So, but I do think that it, it's a lesson for the city that, you know, we have to treat everybody from where they're coming from and that we need better relationships with our unions, continue to, you know, get better relationships with our unions and realize that they, they support our community and we have to be fair on all sides.
Thank you all for answering our questions. If there were topics that you didn't get the chance to address, you may include them now in your two-minute closing statements, if you wish. Going in reverse order from the opening, we'll begin with Ms. Rauschenberger.
Okay, thank you again. My name is Carol Rauschenberger. I'm running for reelection for Elgin City Council. I would appreciate your consideration and your vote. I do believe in Elgin, and I believe that I have started some good work in Elgin that I would like to continue. One is to create a roadmap to a sustainable, resource-efficient future for our city. That I've been working with the Sustainability Commission, and we would like to have a resilient city that not only prepares us for the future, but also in the long run should save us money. I also feel like I want to support the idea of a friendly, safe, and healthy, and a socially just community. We do need more, some more diversified housing. We need great public services. I'm advocating for a COVID response that is more closely aligned with our, with Kent County. And I think the, the homeless, I didn't get to speak on the homelessness issue. I've been working closely with some of those organizations that some of my colleagues spoke about to get, to come to a comprehensive solution. Homelessness is on a spectrum, and you can't just say, I'm going to work with these sort of people that are going to probably find a home in three months. We need to work with all the people that are, have decided to, that downtown Elgin is sort of their home to the people that are homeless or houseless for just a short period of time. And a comprehensive solution that involves everybody in Elgin, I think, will be a very positive. I'd like to continue to support balanced budgets. You know, we're lucky to have a triple bond, AAA bond rating, and we're in a good financial place, but we do have to plan from COVID forward. So I appreciate your vote on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perkins, your closing statement, please.
Again, I'm Jody Perkins. I'm running for Elgin City Council and humbly ask for your vote on April 6th. My big issue is homelessness. It is not only an individual problem, but it is a community problem. It is possible to end homelessness in our city, but first there must be a political will to put forth the effort. We need progressive council members who are willing to look for solutions and create a comprehensive response. Luckily, those solutions are nearby. We need to look no further than Rockford to see a community which has almost eradicated the homeless problem by partnering with Community Solutions, a nonprofit organization that works to achieve a lasting end to homelessness that leaves no one behind. Their initiative, Built for Zero, is a movement of 80-plus communities working to measurably end homelessness by using data. These communities have changed how local homeless response systems work and the impact they can achieve, and thus proving that it is possible to make homelessness, homelessness rare and brief. The city of Elgin could be the next success story in this. I have spoken extensively with Jennifer, who is the community development director up in Rockford, and she is extremely excited. It is extremely inexpensive to join Community Solutions. It is only $10,000, $10,000, and we can certainly find that money to shed some light on fixing this problem. I'm, I'm running for Elgin City Council to help eradicate the homelessness. That's my big thing. But we also need to demonstrate and exercise, like I said earlier, more common sense leadership. We're making decisions on behalf of this great and diverse city. Common sense leadership, to me, is simple and sensible approach to leadership. It is about being a person of character and having an unwavering, unwavering commitment to the success of Elgin. I will accomplish this through my sharing proven practices, and I'm stoked. So thank you. Vote April 6th, please.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz, your closing statement, please.
Sorry, she's leaving, so she had to give me a hug. My name's Anthony Ortiz. I'm running for Elgin City Council. I hope I have your vote on April 6th. Early voting starts March 22nd at the Elgin Township and Yerboyn Library. Also, we're at Streamwood Village Hall for the Cook Roters. I'm running for wider city transparency, reinforce public safety, improve infrastructure, communication, and road, and also more services for our veterans and seniors. I bring a strong leadership background forged within the Marine Corps, softened by my six-year-old beautiful daughter. And I bring good budget awareness, budget creating, and ability to read resolutions and ordinances for my job, what I do at work. You can find more information about me on my website, www.anthonyforelgin.com. That's anthonyforelgin.com. On Facebook, Anthony for Elgin City Council. I have Instagram, Twitter. That's Anthony for Elgin with the number four, not spelled out. And I, I just, I just hope that everybody shows out, votes. We need to, rack the, rack, rack the voting booth, sorry. I forgot what I was going with it. And we just, we just need to get everybody out there, man. The low 5% voter turnout in 2019 was, was not good. We have a city of 100, over 120,000 residents and 5,000 people run, run our beautiful city. I've given back to my country. I've given back to my county. And now I want to give back to our, to my city. All three of those is a collective hub raised me, made me the person I am today. Gave, gave my aspirations to, to give back to my community. I've always been a public servant, and I want to continue. So with my forward-thinking, my strong leadership, my commitment, and loyalty to this beautiful city of Elgin. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McQ.
Well, thank you. I am running for Elgin City Council with my running mates, Karen Jones and Jody Perkins, to bring common sense leadership to Elgin. I have a proven record. You just come downtown to 176 East Chicago and take a look at the two businesses that we developed in that building. And Salon Couture is going into their 14th year, and Blue Box Cafe is, I think, has been my tenant for eight or nine years. Along with that, what they have brought to downtown Elgin is a solid image. These are the kinds of things we need to do, and we need people who can do it. I have proven that. And with my healthcare experience, especially at this time, it adds an element to the council that is missing. No one on the dais has that kind of experience and can help navigate. I also believe that the people of Elgin are really happy with their city. But what's important to them is their act But what's important to them is their activities of daily living, their quality of life, the services that are provided. It isn't, it isn't a great out there element that they're worried about. They're worried about at-home issues. And so I hope that people will vote for me and my running mates because we will bring the issues back into Elgin and we will focus on Elgin and that quality of life. And therefore you, the citizens will be rewarded. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. My name is Karen Jones. I'm a wife, I'm a mom, I'm a homeowner, I'm a business owner of 20-plus years in Elgin. I'm an active and dedicated volunteer, a lifetime Elgin resident. I work collaboratively and I'm confident that I can bring a listening ear and thoughtful perspective to move Elgin forward with common sense and dedication to our community and the city with my running mates Jared McQ and Jody Perkins. I just wanted to touch on a couple of the things that were talked about with the downtown area. Downtown is so unique because everybody owns it, right? It's Elgin's downtown, we all have a piece of it. And it comes up every election cycle, as best said by Jerry McQ. Everybody has these secret plans that, why are we only talking about them during campaign seasons? I've served on the Downtown Neighbor Association, president, secretary, treasurer, hosted events, all these different things. We need to start doing something differently. The city has a purchase of service agreement with that organization and I know they're working hard. I don't know what they're doing and I'm down here every day, but I know that they're working hard at their efforts. But we just don't seem to see those results because we're not getting the feet on the street and all those different things we need down here. We need to start doing things different. We need to reevaluate. So I'm running for city council because I love Elgin. I think we can bring a, a different and upfront and very clear perspective to our city council. I think I can work well with everybody involved. Please follow our Facebook page, Jones McQ Perkins, for events, ways to get involved with our campaign and additional, additional information about our campaign. And I respectfully ask for your vote on April 6th for the Elgin City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. So one thing I do want to touch on is that we didn't get to talk much about. I know it's been alluded to just really quickly, but I think is incredibly important is this idea of sustainability and moving Elgin forward as a sustainable city. I think that it's past time that we understand and we know what the science says about our environment. And I think Elgin needs to move forward as a leader, as the city that we are, the great city that we are and moving forward and, and continuing to explore, not just bringing business that brings clean energy to the city, but also review our own use and make sure that we're, we're trying to reduce our own carbon footprint as well. So I just wanted to just bring that up. So April 6th, incredibly important again, and I know we've had nothing but incredibly important elections lately and this one is no different. And you know, I think that the goal that a lot of us have, have spoken about it, I've spoken to other candidates here is to have 10,000 people come out to vote. That's what I'm asking all of you to do, is to talk to others and get out and vote. So that's the first thing is I think it's important that we all get out and vote and exercise that right. The other thing is you got to understand residents of Elgin that you got a choice to make. We have, we have 11 different people from different backgrounds and different ideas, different intentions about this city to be your next council person. You really have great choices. I want to be one of those four choices. I spent my entire life in public service. I have the background and skills to represent your interests. I spent my life listening to people. As I said before, way more important to listen than it is to speak. It is through our listening that we're able to find common ground, to find those shared interests and our common goals between people. That's how work gets done. I listen to you at the door, I've listened to you on the phone, I've listened to you through your text messages and social media. I've worked with the community, I've worked with our schools. I, I've been a teacher for 19 years and teachers do what they do every day because of their belief in the people they work with and the people we want our children to become. I am asking for your vote on April 6th so that I can continue to fight for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Good.
Thank you again to Legal Women Voters for hosting this forum. Thank you for all the viewers who are watching tonight. And I just, to go back a little bit to touch on the qualifications, you can go to my website at dustinggood.com and see my background in Elgin. I've been volunteering here for, for about a decade now, I think about a decade. And they've been in very important positions, you know, to, to know what's going on in the boardroom at ECC is important for a city council member to understand what the different institutions in our community are doing. To serve five years on the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. It was mentioned a lot tonight, strategic planning and what's going on. I, I know intimately what happened over those five years and I know what happened after that. So they shifted from a plan over to principles and priorities. Not saying that I agree with everything that took place and how we, how we executed that plan, but I'm up to speed on the issues. So there, there isn't going to be, you know, a, a period of time spent me doing the homework. I've, I've been doing the homework the last 10 years. And to touch on what Karen brought up about bringing people to the downtown. When I got onto the board, one of the first things that we wanted to do was to allow residents to be members of the DNA. For a long time, the DNA served as kind of a, their focus on business. And we said, you know, the stakeholders are all throughout our city, let's open it up to residents. One of the first things I specifically did was jump on the farmer market subcommittee. And I, I pushed to move that farmer market from Thursday in morning afternoon hours to Friday evening. So working class people could go there and we started tracking the foot traffic there. So it was year one, it went from 300, year two, 600, year three, 1,000. And throughout the pandemic, we managed to bring 1,000 people downtown every week to help this, the downtown businesses. So with me, you're getting a candidate, I know where the power in the city lies. I know the direction that we've been trying to go in. I know the problems that we have. I'm familiar with the relationships and I know the small stuff. I work in the startup space. We have to have a laser focus on every detail of our operation. And in voting for me, April 6th, that's what you'll be getting on city council. So again, go to dustinggood.com to learn more about my background and thanks again to the legal women voters.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Thank you to the Legal Women Voters. Thank you for everyone who, who has tuned in to watch this entire forum. And thank you to my fellow candidates, candidates for throwing their head in the ring again. You know, for, for me, you know, I'm running for reelection because I love this city. I love the people. My pastor, former pastor, Second Baptist Church, where I serve as a deacon, would always just say, you know, love the people, that's the key. And I do, and I do it and I show it in every single way, not just policy-wise, on the way that I vote and the way that I see the world. I express what my, my background and, and my experiences, I let that be known. But I go out there and I do the work. You know, it's easy to talk a good game and, and say, well, you're going to do this, you're going to do that. And, you know, you hope to get this done. I mean, that's all fine and dandy, but I've literally been out there in the trenches doing the work. I, you know, I hold annual events every year where I give away thousands of backpacks, thousands of school supplies, thousands of meals. You know, holiday time, I'm giving away hundreds of turkeys. I mean, currently even right now, I partner with the Greater Elgin Family Care Center to put on COVID-19 vaccination clinics. And so, and I'm hosting that at my Second Baptist Church and I'm doing it for our hardest-hit communities when it comes to COVID back, when it comes to COVID-19. And that's our Black and Hispanic community. So I'm partnering with organizations to get inside the church to get that COVID vaccine. So I'm not just one that's here to talk about the work and, and wish for, wish for things. I'm out there actually every day doing the work, volunteering, giving my time to, to countless number of organizations, networking, building bridges. And that's what it's really about at the end of the day for me. I do this simply because I love it and I want to leave a better community for my kids. I'm a father of three. I have all girls, 15, five and two years old. And they want to be able to have this community be the way that it is and even better when they get older. So we talked about, we talked about diversity and diversity and how beautiful our city is and that's great. And, you know, and that is something that we need to continue to push and not just use as a, as a, as a talking mechanism to, 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 to try to make it seem like we're, we're in, all, all in this together. And, and sometimes we're not and we have to be able to talk to those issues. So again, my name is Corey Dixon. Thank you for your time and I hope for your vote on April 6th.
Thank you all for participating in this candidate forum and giving the voters a chance to hear your views. For more information on these and other candidates, check the voter guide on our league website, l w v elgin area.org. That's where you will find candidate questionnaires containing background information and priorities if elected. That concludes tonight's candidate forum and I want to thank the candidates, the league members who worked to provide this virtual forum and the voters who take the time to watch these forums and learn about the candidates in order to make an informed choice. If you've applied for a vote by mail ballot, they will be mailed out beginning March 12th. Voting early in person at specified early voting sites begins on March 22nd. And voting on election day at your regular polling place will of course be on April 6th. If you plan to vote early, please note that different sites are open different hours and there may be changes this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. You can check the Kane County website for any updates. We hope that this candidate forum presented as a public service by the League of Women Voters has been helpful. If you are interested in joining the Elgin Area League of Women Voters or supporting the work that we do, please contact us at l w v elgin area.org. League membership is open to men as well as women and we welcome anyone interested in issues, voter registration and elections. Thank you and good night.